We have given that of Ibn Qayyim. Amongst the scholars, other than Ibn Qayyim, "The Ibadah is something that is..." They said, "That which has been commanded by the Shariah of Allah (ﷻ)," "that which has been commanded by the Shariah", "that is the law giver." Who is the law giver? Who is the law giver? Allah (ﷻ). "That which has been commanded by the Shariah..." Shariah, "not something that is..." Just a customary... Something that is customary, yeah, is the custom of our people. So it's just to... "...or something that you know the brain necessitates and say, you know, I think", as you have explained previously. Why? Because Ibadah is something that is what? If Ibadah is something that is divinely legislated. There is no way you will establish and then say, "This is Ibadah using your intellect alone." It has to be something that is divinely inspired. And then it is not something that you say, "This is what is done in Biddah", you know, "It is customary amongst the Nupa people", hence, this is how we're going to worship Allah. We found our forefathers. Afwan, you're going to bear with me as I share the link to people. You're going to bear with our... So our forefathers on this path. So who are you to tell us not to worship Allah like that? And this is the authentic definition of what Ibadah is. But the all-encompassing definition is that which Ibn Taimiyah gave. Even though, what Ibn Qayyim said Ibadah is, is the correct definition of it, but there is an all-encompassing definition that explains it and then did the tafsil of it, which was given by Sheikh Al-Islam Ibn Taimiyah. It's an all-encompassing name, a collective pronoun, a collective name. For everything which Allah loves and is pleased with. From amongst the sayings, the inward ones and the outward ones. Is that clear? You know, doing what Allah commands you to do is obedience to Allah (ﷻ) and that is Ibadah. And then living that which Allah warns us against and Allah asks us to abstain from. Abstaining from it is obedience to Allah and that is Ibadah also. This is what is known as Ibadah worship. That you cannot be able to restrict the different types of Ibadah because there are many. Whatever Allah commands, then that is Ibadah. Whatever Allah commands and you live. Whether this is apparent on the body parts or it is inward, hidden in the heart. Because Ibadah sometimes is on the tongue, sometimes it's in the heart and sometimes it's manifested on the body parts. So it could be on the tongue like "التصبيحي", saying, "Subhanallah, the remembering Allah (ﷻ)". Saying, "هلا لا، التهليل", and then saying, "لا إله إلا الله". Every statement of the tongue, "المشروعة", which has been legislated by Allah of the remembrance of Allah, "فإنا إباده", then know that that is Ibadah. So let us go to our class today. Now, all praise belongs to Allah (ﷻ). He has given us yet another opportunity to be gathered here to continue our study session in this Kitab, Ushulul Thalaitha, in this our Darul Tauhid Islamic Center. And then, the aim is to spread the word of Allah (ﷻ) and that is known other than the message of Tauhid and sound Aqeedah upon which the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam left the companions on. Today is what? The second day in the month of what? The second day in the month of what? Muharram. 14 what? 1444. I wrote 1443. Still living in the past, right? After the historic Hijra of Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, from where? From where? Why did the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam left Mecca, to Medina? Why? Why? He was prosecuted. He was prosecuted, right? Why was he prosecuted? Why was he... We're discussing Hijra, right? Today is the second Hijra, second day in the month of Muharram. Because of what? One message. What was the message? So he was persecuted because of Tauhid. We're privileged today, we're preaching Tauhid and none is prosecuting us, at least physically, right? But the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam was prosecuted. So they suffered for us to enjoy what we're enjoying today. Is that clear? So above that, al-Hijra means... Hijra means what? Also to migrate from Allah's disobedience to Allah's obedience. To migrate from Allah's disobedience to Allah's obedience. We have started discussing the different categories of... The different categories of what? The different categories of Ibadah, which we have been commanded to do. And then, it is very important for us to know the different categories of Ibadah so that we can be able to worship Allah as he legislates and then we can avoid falling into that which attracts Allah's wrath and that is Shirk, majorly, that is Shirk. When you don't know Ibadah and what it is, then you are exposed to what? To the dangers of falling into what? To the dangers of falling into Ashirk. So we ask Allah (ﷻ) to protect us. Here, last week we discussed what? Khaf. What are the two different types of Khaf that we have? I'm listening. What are the two different types of Khaf that we have? What are the two different types of Khaf that we have? The two different types of Khaf under Ibadah. Anwa al-Ibadah, al-Khafu, we have two different types. Al-Khafu, you were not around, go. You were. Al-Khafu. Al-Khafu, that was what we discussed. Afwan, al-Rajaa. Okay, it doesn't matter, we treated al-Khafu previous... The weeks before. What are the two different types of Khaf? Quickly, please. Or you don't want us to continue today? You have the natural fear and then you have what? The one that has been legislated, the one that is the fear of Ibadah. Like Allah says, al-Rajaa, who can summarize what we discussed last week of hope? Which one is the hope of Ibadah? And which one takes one to the danger of Shirk? Now, and then what again? So my mind is back now, I've been sending the link. Uh huh, I'm listening. We discussed what? There are people that hoping the mercy of Allah without doing anything. And then the true believers are who? Those that actually do righteous deeds and then after their righteous deeds, they now fall back to hope. From the glorious Quran is the statement of the Most High. And put your trust in Allah, if you are believers indeed. Conditional. If you are true believers, then trust in Allah. And put your trust in Allah, if you are believers indeed. Interesting explanation will follow, Insha Allah. Allah (ﷻ) says, "And whoever puts his trust in Allah", then he will suffice him. If you put your trust in Allah, he will suffice you. Qawluhu, a statement, the statement of Sheikh Mohammed bin Abdul Waab. "The evidence to support the statement that..." Trust in Allah, reliance on Allah is an act of Ibadah and it should never be directed to any other than Allah. Is the statement of the Most High. And put your trust in Allah, if you are believers indeed. That is living your affairs and then depending on Allah, that is Tawakkul. Living your affairs, the entirety of your affairs in the hands of Allah. And then reliance and dependence on Allah. Alisaq dzalik. And then living all your affairs. Living your affairs in the hands of Allah, directing all your affairs to Allah. You have left your matters, your affairs in the hands of Allah. You have left your affairs in the hands of Allah. Am I clear? You have left your affairs in the hands of Allah. This is what is known as Tawakkul. You have done what is called Tawakkaliq. And it is one of the greatest types of worship. It is one of what? One of the greatest acts of worship. It is one of the greatest acts of worship. For that reason, Allah (ﷻ), glory be to Him, glorify be He. Allah (ﷻ), He says, Listen. You know Sheikh Fauzan bin Fauzan, he's trying to teach us the importance of learning Nahwu and other aspects of the language. But he's not repeating it a lot in the book, right? He brings it when it's needed. That's another lesson for us. That you are trying to learn Arabic language to perfect it, not because you want to be a linguist to perfect the language. You are learning it so that it will help you to understand the message of Quran, that's all about it. That is why he only employs it when it's needed for an explanation but he doesn't bother you by bringing all those things in explanation. He brings it when he feels that there is need for it to be explained to you from that aspect, from the grammatical structure of the sentence so that you appreciate the importance of it. And then let us appreciate that now. What is the Jar and Majrur here? Why? It was brought forth. Then this one came before what? Before the actual dua of the action. Put your trust on Allah, in Allah, put your trust. If truly you are believers. So that it will give you the understanding of what? Restriction. And exclusiveness. That you don't depend on anyone but Allah and that is why al-Jarwal Majrur was brought forth. So that it will give you the absolute understanding that this act should only be directed to Allah (ﷻ). That you don't trust on anyone but Allah. Do you understand? Like a similar thing, not Jarwal Majrur, but a similar... When Allah says, the prepositional verb. Al-Rahman, the prepositional verb was what? Delayed. Al-Arshi was brought forth. The same thing. Al-Arshi, the prepositional verb. Which means it is exclusive to Allah, it is restricted to Allah alone. Do you understand this? Does that make sense? The prepositional verb was brought. So that you know that you don't depend on anyone but Allah alone. Is that clear? On Allah, not on other than Allah. Then afterwards, immediately Allah says, if truly you are believers. If you are believers indeed. If you are true believers, all of this can take it, right? Listen. Then Allah now made it from amongst the conditions of Iman. That before you can be called a Mu'min, Allah has made it conditional that you must have Tawakkal. I don't know if this is clear. Because Allah says, Allah has made it conditional. That if truly you are believers, if you are believers indeed, the condition is, so Allah has made it a condition of Iman. That without it, what does it signify? That is why Sheikh says, wadalla, this noun indicates and points to the fact that, it indicates that, that whoever does not trust in Allah, whoever does not trust in Allah, that person is not a believer. Do you know how amazing Quran is? Well, if you don't know, let me introduce it to you. We're discussing different types of Ibadah here. Here Allah says, Allah made a conditional statement. In another place, Allah (ﷻ) says, Again, al-khafu, min anwa al-Ibadah. Here again, Allah made it a condition of Iman. Sharqiyah, this is a condition, if truly... Hence, if you are not afraid of Allah, if you do not fear Allah, then you are not a believer. Here it says, In another place again, you know the different types of Ibadah mentioned. In another place again in the Quran, Allah (ﷻ) says, It's one of it again. All of these three mentioned in the Quran alongside "en kuntum mu'mineen". So Allah has made it a condition of Iman. So whoever does not exercise that, that person is not a believer. The Allah protect us. Trust in Allah, therefore trust in Allah. Ibadahun Azzima is a very great act of worship. The believer perpetually, daiman. At each time, there is never a time in the life of a believer that he does not trust in Allah. Not even when he is having first class. He doesn't trust in his intellect that he will make it in life, he trusts in Allah. Not even when he has held on to all the means of achieving something, he still trusts in Allah. Daiman, perpetually, at each time in the life of a believer, he trusts in Allah. You know, some people will go and relax and say, "We've done everything now. We will pass, we will win, we will get what we want." Now they've relegated Allah from the equation. But the believer, even at the highest... The highest form of preparation been put forth in trying to achieve something, he still trusts in Allah. That is why, he trusts in Allah and then he depends on Allah. He trusts in Allah and then he depends on Allah. From amongst the names of Allah is what? What does it mean? The disposal of affairs. So you put your affairs in the hands of Allah because Allah is the one that disposes all affairs. That you get something is in the hands of Allah. That you are protected against something is in the hands of Allah. So al-Wakil is amongst the beautiful names of Allah. "The people said: 'All of you have gathered here, and they are afraid of you, and they have increased their faith, and they said: 'We will forgive them, and we will heal them.'" So Allah has made, يعنى والله من اسمائه And Allah from amongst these beautiful names, الوكيل is الوكيل, the disposer of affairs. أي الموكول إليه أمور عباده. الموكول إليه أمور عباده, the one whom the affairs of his slaves are been آآ have been entrusted on. So everyone is as entrusted is affairs in the hands of Allah. Because he is the disposer of affairs. So you trust in Allah. نابر على أمرنا الله. أليس كذلك؟ You have entrusted all your affairs in the hands of Allah, you trust in Allah. الموكول إليه أمور عباده. فتوكل لا يكون إلا على الله. Therefore فأو سبب يق Because we have explained what this Tawakkul means. لا يكون Do you now agree that لا يكون إلا على الله, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, glory be to him? That it cannot be by a Kassan Chewa. Dependence, trust, trust cannot be except in Allah. Dependence, you cannot depend on anyone besides Allah. لا يكون إلا على الله. لماذا؟ لأن الله الوكيل. Because Allah is الوكيل. من اسمائه الوكيل. Allah is what? الوكيل. There is no one that is الوكيل besides Allah. So how can you depend on someone that is not الوكيل? Allah is الوكيل in his name and his actions. ولا يجوز أن يقول Listen to this lesson. ولا يجوز أن يقول And it is not permissible for someone to say توكلت على فلان I depend on so and so. ولا يجوز أن يقول توكلت على فلان لأن التوكل عبادة. Because Tawakkul is what? An act of worship. So how do you direct it to other than Allah? How do you depend on someone besides Allah? والعبادة لا تكون إلا لله. And Except, it is directed to Allah سبحانه و تعالى, except it is for Allah. Do for the sake of Allah, it is and then as a result of command given by Allah, or whatever you leave as a result given as a آآ as a manifestation. Mafum? So here ولا يجوز Listen, I'm repeating this, because we are fond of saying this. And that is why at the end of the day, we keep blaming and insulting people. Because we depend on whom we're not supposed to depend on. And then you say, Barshi the Kirki, he's not a nice person. You depended on him to buy a car for you. You depended on him to get you a job, not on Allah. You depended on him to pay for your brides آآ Yeah, you depended on him to pay for your children's school fees. You depended on him to pay for your house rent. You depended on him to buy you a home. You depended on him and then forthcoming. You now go back and then you are now complaining, complaining, complaining and insulting him. Don't depend on him, leave him, he's mistaken. He will disappoint you, he's mistaken. He's a poor person. Ibn al-Miskin, the son of a poor person. All of Masin in the presence of Allah. So ask from Allah, even when you want someone to help you, know that it is Allah that makes people to do that. So ask on Allah, depend on Allah, as I guess depending on the creations. You will have a friend that you grew up together with. And then God tests him with the position of being the leader of your community, a governor or something. Or a successful businessman. And then it is possible that you're still moving around on the street without having a car of yours or even a motorcycle of it, or a tricycle. And then you eat together, even as it is. He's your friend, and then you see people that say, ah, he was classmate with the president. Oh, he was this, ah, we grew up together, he was my neighbor, I went to school together. But he has not done anything for me. No, it's not him, it's Allah that does. If you depend on Allah. If Allah has written that you get something, then it will be a means of giving you that thing. That is why we are always facing disappointment, because we are putting our trust in the wrong direction. Trust in Allah and you'll never be disappointed. Trust in Allah and then you will never be disappointed. So أما إذا أصنّد إلى أحد If you أما إذا أصنّد إلى أحد من الخلق تشرفا If you assign someone to take care of an affair of yours, or an action that you want him to do on your behalf. Is that clear? You are seated here and then you are asking someone to go and join the farewell queue for you on your behalf. You gave him your car keys and the money. Or you are here, you ask someone to build a home for you. And then you send money to him and then you entrust him with your money. Right? And then you want to move into the house by the end of the year. Now you say, oh, I'm just trusting in his statement, because I've given him money, I trust in his ability to deliver. Now listen. أما إذا أصنّد إلى أحد من الخلق تشرفا فهذا لا يسمى توكلا. This is not called Tawakkul. إنما يسمى توكيلا. This is called what? توكيلا, assignment. Representation. أليس كذلك؟ Standing for you. Right? That is why in our university days I was once a Wakil of the Faculty of Environmental Design, but you had the Amir. So I'm the Amir's representative in the faculty. أليس كذلك؟ That is what? So the Amir now entrusts the affairs of the Muslims of that community in my hands. So I'm representing him, he has assigned me to do that, right? So that is توكيلا. That is not توكل. والوكلة معروفة أنك توكل أحدا يقدى لك حاجة والوكلة Assignment. Assigning something to someone, معروفة, this is known, أليس كذلك؟ أنك توكل أحدا That you ask someone to represent you, you have assigned him يقدى لك حاجة To do something of a need for you. You have assigned him to do something for you on your behalf. This is معروفة, أليس كذلك؟ We have it in our homes, you have people that you assign to do certain things for you. Cook for me, you have the rich ones among you, you have cooks at home, right? So you have assigned, right? Someone to do that thing for you, you have assigned someone to آآ water your flowers for flower lovers like us. But no matter what. Flowers cannot substitute trees, so plant a tree please, we need sheds around. You know I'm pro tree, I'm pro green. We need to have greenery, Allah has described Jannah with beautiful gardens. Trees, Ashjar, Jannah, we describe, we define Jannah here, right? Because the trees are forming canopy, right? But my wife said I said, you love to, you love different varieties of food, you are always watching food channels and then you are following food channels on Instagram. And then in our defense, she said what? She said, go and read the Quraan. Why will Allah keep describing food for people of Jannah? If food is not something to be reckoned with, why is it that Allah has taken it upon himself to describe that you are going to eat in Jannah? So food forms part of the things that Allah has put on the table for us in Jannah to attract us to come to Jannah. That is for food lovers, right? آآ وقد وكَلَ النبِيُّ صل الله عليه وسلم من ينوبون عنه في بعد الأعمال The Prophet ﷺ has actually assigned those that will represent him that will stand for him في بعد الأعمال in certain actions. Who can give us an example? There is emissaries. Muadz bin Jabal, the Prophet sent him to Yemen. Abu Musa al-Ashari, the Prophet sent him to Yemen. رضي الله عنه مجمعين. Commanders, the Prophet send them to stand on his behalf. And then they are the representatives of the Prophet ﷺ, so the believers obey them at the battlefield. What the commander says, they follow, because he was assigned by the Prophet ﷺ to do that thing on behalf of the Prophet ﷺ. That is توكيل. وكَلَ النبِيُّ صل الله عليه وسلم من ينوبون عنه في بعد الأعمال فالتوكل غير التوكل. التوكل, now do you understand the difference?
In Arabic, or in English, the over the
Yes, yeah, now, but that is why we say English is handicapped. It cannot stand where Arabic language is standing, right? Because the vocabulary will be frustrated. فتوكل عبادة لا يكون إلا لله Is repeatedly reminding us of this. Trust. Dependence, reliance cannot be on anyone, you cannot trust in anyone but in Allah. But this is coming after we have been made to understand the difference between التوكل and التوكيل. Then you have توكل, go. They are not protect us. ولا يجوز أن تقول توكلت على فلان Malay is repeating it. It is not permitted, permissible for you to say, I depend on so and so. وإنما تقول وكَلت فلان Just say that I've entrusted someone with this, I've assigned him to do this. That is what we are saying. You know, the English language might not do justice to it, so we need explanation for you to get it. I hope it's clear.
The example is clear.
Yes, I've asked Ben Lo. You know, I've trusted, now I gave you my wealth to take to a certain town, and then someone calls me and say, wallah, I've entrusted Ben Lo with my wealth. I've entrusted social answer with my family, to stand for my family in my absence. It happens, when you are going out, when you are traveling, you get someone that, okay, whenever my family is in need of anything, please stand for them, that is توكيل. But you know that it is Allah that protects them, it is Allah that you have entrusted them to. Do you know the difference now? و مع هذا أنت توكله ولا تتوكل عليه Even if you have assigned someone to do something for you. Don't rely on him, rely on Allah. Because he can fail you. That is why you have ministers. You have commissioners. You have directors. You have team members that you have assigned with jobs. Entrusted them with it, but they end up disappointing you. When you rely on them, sometimes you don't get things done. Even if they have the qualification. So you can only assign, but at the tell end of it. You are actually relying on Allah, Allah, yeah Allah. I depend on you for so and so to be able to deliver that. You have entrusted someone with your wealth. If from here, and then you rely on him with all the bulletproof car. And then you are relaxed that you are actually dependent on that bulletproof car. What happens? Between is leaving your place and the other place and then is involved in an accident. And the car catches fire. Every is money, and the money burns away. But if you rely on Allah after holding on to the means then that is perfection. Have bulletproof cars. Have bulletproof those. And then depend on Allah, because that also can fail you. What if the guys decide to bomb your, the wall of your house? To come in. Or to come in from above. و مع ذلك و مع هذا أنت توكله ولا تتوكل عليه وإنما تتوكل على الله You only depend on Allah, إنما يفيد الحصى. وإنما تتوكل على الله. You only depend on Allah سبحانه و تعالى. فلا حظ الفرق بين الأمرين فلا حظ الفرق بين الأمرين What you will observe. Observing, go. Observing the two, the difference between, observe the difference between the two. التوكل والتوكل. فلا حظ بين فلا حظ الفرق بين الأمرين التوكل والتوكل. Is the difference clear now? Have you observed now? Paid attention to it? ومن صفات المؤمنين From amongst the attributes of the believers. ومن صفات المؤمنين ومن صفات المؤمنين, from amongst the attributes of the believers, the صفة. ما ذكر الله تعالى بقوله What Allah سبحانه و تعالى, the Most High mentioned in a statement. إنما المؤمنون الذين إذا ذكر الله وجلت قلوبهم وإذا تليت عليهم آياته زادتهم إيمانا وعلى ربهم يتوكلوا Allah سبحانه و تعالى, he says إنما المؤمنون الذين إذا ذكر الله وجلت قلوبهم The believers are only those الذين إذا ذكر إنما يفيد الحصى Only. These are only believers, then Allah mentioned part of their attributes, من صفات المؤمنين. الذين إذا ذكر الله Those whom, when Allah is mentioned وجلت قلوبهم, their hearts of, يعنى, become fearful of Allah. You have fear in their hearts when Allah is mentioned. وإذا تليت عليهم آياته And when his verses of the Quraan When the verses of Allah are being recited to them زادتهم إيمانا أي تصدقا و يقينا زادتهم إيمانا أي تصدقا و يقينا Their certainty and their belief in the words of Allah. Whenever the Quraan is being recited to them, their Iman increases. This increment in Iman, تصدقا, they know that, yes! These are the words of Allah. They are certain, they believe more. Whenever they read the verses of the Quraan, the verses are being recited to them. الشاهد هنا وعلى ربهم يتوكلوا And on their Lord, in their Lord, they put their trust. وعلى ربهم Al Jarul Majrur, go. قدّم الجار والمجرو Go. يتوكلون هذه من شفاء المؤمنين This is from amongst what? From amongst what? من شفاء المؤمنين, from amongst the attributes. From amongst the attributes of the believers. فتوكل عبادة عظيمة لا تكون إلا لله أزوجا Please, he has repeated this statement three times. ما تكرر تقرر What is oft repeated is bound to be assimilated. فتوكل عبادة عظيمة لا تكون إلا لله أزوجا It's a great act of worship. لا تكون إلا لله أزوجا It cannot be except for Allah سبحانه و تعالى، لأنه يعني هو القدر على كل شيء Because Allah is the one that is able to do everything. قادر على كل شيء is the one that has ability over everything. لأنه القدر على كل شيء Because He Allah is the one that has ability over everything, has control, authority over everything. وهو الملك And Allah is the owner لكل شيء is the owner of everything. أليس كذلك؟ أليس كذلك وهو الذي يقدر أن يحقق لك مطلوبك It is Allah سبحانه وتعالى يقدر that has the ability and يحقق لك مطلوبك to fulfill your desire. You have anyone that will fulfill your desires besides Allah? مطلوبك, what you are desirous of, what you want to achieve. So why will you depend on other than Allah? Trust in Allah. Because only Allah سبحانه وتعالى is able to grant you your heart's desires. So you trust in other than Allah. You want to work in so 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 place. You trust in other than Allah, you are not able to achieve that hope. So unachievable hope. That is what you get. When you trust in other than Allah, you are plagued with the corona of unachievable hopes. The only virus that will cure it is for you to put your trust back in Allah. واضح? وهو الذي يقدر أن يحقق لك مطلوبك Allah سبحانه وتعالى is the one that is able. Only Allah is able to fulfill your desires. أما المخلوق فإنه قد لا يقدر أن يحقق لك مطلوبك But as for the creations, المخلوق فإنه قد لا يقدر أن يحقق لك مطلوبك He is not able, right? To fulfill your desires. You depend on him. Sometimes, oh, you trust in him, you get what you want. Sometimes you trust in him, you don't get what you want. But when you trust in Allah, you get what is good for you. When you trust in Allah, you get what is good for you. You trust in Allah to secure a job. Allah doesn't give you the job, because that is what is good for you. Whether you know that or not. أَنَا مِنُو بِهِ أَوْ لَا تُؤْمِنُ Say whether you believe in it or not, but that is it. You trust in Allah to pass your examinations after reading. It is possible that you will fail. But that failure is what is good for you. If only, if only you knew what Allah has kept in store for you. Yeah, many people have seen that. Right? So I wanted to study medicine. I was admitted to study medicine, Ebu Zaria. Circumstances led to me not studying it. Not completing my registration. I had to do change of course. I went to architecture, which I've never dreamt of before then. Today, architecture has given me the ample time to do what I love doing the most. And then I'm seated here, not thinking of any Wahala. It's a personal industry, right? So my time is readily available. Because Allah has chosen a career path for me. Which was contrary to what I wanted. So Allah's choice is the best for me. I'm a living witness for that. I wept because of medicine then, right? I didn't know anything, it was medicine, medicine, medicine. Behold, I was given admission to study medicine. Behold, I was given admission to study medicine. I didn't even get to start hundred level in medicine. Did change of course, cried. Didn't apply for architecture, got architecture, Alhamdulillah. Circumstances, right? When I saw A R C, I said, what is A R C H? Is this archaeology? And I was like, what is this? And I saw architecture and Alhamdulillah, I got architecture. And then today, I'm more than happy for this career path that Allah has chosen for me. Wallah, otherwise I wouldn't be able to do the hour. Wallahi, may Allah accept it from us. Wallahi, I wouldn't be able to do it, Allah علَّه. But if I've studied medicine, either I abandon medicine, but today I'm practicing architecture and I'm a full-time Daebe even in Allah. I'm not a part-time Daebe, honestly. Because it's what we do every day, be even in Allah. But if I've studied medicine, it's either I leave medicine to focus on Dawa. With medicine, I cannot be able to do the rules we are doing every week, right? But with architecture, I'm able to do that. So now, whose choice is the best? Allah's. So even when you have to weep for not getting what you want, trust in Allah, because what Allah gives you, wallahi, is better than what you will always want for yourself. Allah gives you what is best for you, because Allah knows you don't know. أليس كذلك So وهو الذي يقدر أن يحقق لك مطلوبك أما المخلوق فإنه أن يحقق لك مطلوبك فإنك توكله في قضائي شيء فإنك توكله في قضائي شيء, go. You assign him to do a certain thing for you. من الأمور لكن تتوكل على الله في حصول ذلك شيء But in reality now, you trust in Allah for achieving that. In order to be able to achieve that, you have assigned someone to build a house for you. Trust in Allah for the house to be completed as you wanted. You have assigned someone to do business for you. Trust in Allah for him, to give him the ability to do the business the right way. Yes, you have assigned someone to do something for you, but you trust in Allah. You have assigned the driver to move your family to a particular town because of a ceremony that you have. The family is with the driver, you have entrusted them in the hands of the driver, but you have trusted, you have put your trust in Allah. You have just assigned the driver to move them. But the one that actually moves them successfully from point A to B is Allah. So you are now depending on Allah. Otherwise, there will be accident on the road. Otherwise, something will happen, otherwise something will happen. And then they will not be able to reach their destination. So you are actually depending on Allah to be able to reach your destination. أليس كذلك That is why we say لكن تتوكل على الله في حصول ذلك شيء ثم أيضا and also لنعلم أن التوكل لا ينافي الأخذ بالأسباب لا ينافي بالأسباب Then also, so that we will know that أن التوكل that توكل, توكل لا ينافي الأسباب Does not negate holding on to the means of an examination. How do you become a medical doctor? You have to go to school, university. Only trust in Allah to pass examinations. But does that suffice without attending lectures? Does that suffice without reading? So what do you do now? So do not have this misconception about توكل. When people say we trust in Allah, but they do nothing. Yes, we trust in Allah to bring peace back to our shores. But what are we doing to stop the peace, to stop the insecurity? Yes, it is Allah. But what are we doing as individuals? As people in position of authority? As people charged with that responsibility, as individuals? What are we doing to change? إن لا يغير ما بقومين حتى ما يغير بانفسهم أليس كذلك So Allah does not, did I recite the verse correctly? It's written رأض إن الله لا يغير ما بقومين حتى يغير ما بانفسهم Am I making sense? So the أخذ بالأسباب, some people have negated that. That, oh, we trust in Allah, but they don't do anything. What business are you doing? Why, how do you intend to feed your family? You are marrying first, second, third, fourth wife, giving back to children. How do you intend to feed them, I trust in Allah? But you are not doing anything, you are always sitting at home. You have not put anything on paper or any strategy or any action that you are doing to fetch your money. But you say you trust in Allah, and then you are giving back to children. That is a misconception of what توكل is. I guess that is what we need to understand. You don't give back to children and marry more wives and say you are trusting in Allah, when practically you don't have the financial means to do so. But when you stand up and you are a businessman, no matter how small the business is, or you are working, no matter how much you are earning, if you trust in Allah, and then that's amount that you are earning, and then you know that, okay, I'm planning, I'm saving, this is my plan, this is how I intend to educate my child. At least what I'm earning, I'm able to save this, I'm able, I'm planning towards this. Then we know you are trusting in Allah to provide for you. Because as you are earning fifty thousand naira monthly and you are trusting in Allah, and then you are planning your life within that fifty thousand naira, if you actually trust in Allah, Allah gives you one million naira. أليس كذلك So don't negate holding on to the means. And say, oh, tomorrow is examination, say, no, I need استاذني. I'm going to do Tahajjud tonight, and then I'm going to do a lot of Avedkar and pray to Allah, and then I'm not going to read anything. Then you are going to have carryover. Why? Because you have not understood the true concept of what? So there is insecurity, so we trust in Allah to change our condition, everyone is sleeping, and the mushrikun are continuing with their shirk. أليس كذلك Those disobeying Allah, committing major acts of shirk, they're continuing their shirk. Those that are involved in corrupt practices, they are being left to continue with whatever they are doing of corruption, no any strategy, no nothing. And then we say, we are believers, Allah will change our condition. That is foolishness of the highest order. From strategy to abstenance from sins, to physical strategies on auto-cutting insecurity, we must put everything on deck, on the table. And then work day and night to actualize that strategy, and then put our trust in Allah. أن التوكل ثم أيضا لنعلم أن التوكل لا ينافي الأخذ بالأسباب فيجمع المسلم بين التوكل على الله والأخذ بالأسباب فيجمع المسلم Therefore, the Muslim now combines two things. بين التوكل It combines between putting trust in Allah بين التوكل على الله والأخذ بالأسباب and holding on to the means. Cost and effect, right? So the means of attending something, you have actually perfected that means. And then you put your trust in Allah. ولا تناشى بينهما There is no negation between the two of them. You don't hold on to the means and say, we're going to depend on our military might alone to defeat them, without trusting in Allah, wallahi, will not succeed. And then we can't say we will not securities in intelligence, we're not going to employ all of this thing. Right? We're going to only pray to Allah to change our conditions. No, you have to hold on to the truth. الأخذ بالأسباب التوكل يعني أشلا الأخذ بالأسباب من التوكل It's part of depending on Allah, tie your camel and depend on Allah. Tie your camel and depend on Allah. Look left and right before you cross the road. Don't say, I trust in Allah, and you go to this highway. And then you say, Allah has not written that a car will hit me, I trust in Allah. No car will touch me. And then you go there, you are the biggest fool in town. So ولا تناشى بينهما فأنت تعمل الأسباب التي امرت بعملها You will do the actions of that constitute the means of attending something that you have been commanded to do. And then what? ولكن لا تعمد على الأسباب But do not depend on the means that you have hold on to. That is why you see someone, say, I've done everything possible. His means, he has connections, so he puts up this phone call. He calls the president, he calls this, he calls that, he calls that. At the end of the day, he doesn't get what he wants. Because he depends on his connections. Ha, this guy is intelligent. He got what? First class. And the guy so much has confidence in his own intelligence and trusts in his intelligence. That nobody is going to see his CV and rejects him. Five years down the line, he's still roaming the street looking for job. Because he has put his trust in his intelligence. Wallahi, they exist. He now trusts in his intelligence, not in Allah. Oh, my dad is the most powerful person in town. My dad has a lot of connections. So the guy is relaxed. He puts his trust in the connection of his father to be successful. Up to now, he has not even smelled the path of success. And he came from a very big family, he has not smelled the path of success. They exist. Why? Because his trust has been directed to where it is not supposed to be directed to. So he trusts in his intelligence. He trusts in his connections. He trusts in his money. I ended desire to say, مُنْوَنَّ أَبُو You see people saying this arrogantly. ميسقين, مساقين. He has gotten a lot of money, he's a multi-billionaire. He feels انتهى القيمة تُبَنَّدَ As long as money speaks, we are going to do this. Now he's telling you that I don't depend on Allah, it's my money that will do the work for me. It happens? You've had people saying this? As long as money speaks, then we are going to win this thing, we are going to make the next government, we are going to do this. As long as money speaks. And then someone will say, as long as it is population, the number of people that are behind you that decide your success, then I'm already successful. He is now depending on the number of people that are supporting him, not Allah. You've had this. So وإنما تعمد على الله You only rely on Allah, depend أنت تزرع الزراعة أنت تزرع الزراعة You sow the seed. أليس كذلك Mango seed, go and sow a mango seed. في الأرض هذا سبب This is a means. You cannot be so foolish and have a special means. You take medication, then depend on Allah for for healing. But if you depend on paracetamol, then we ask you, Mr. A is complaining of headache. Mr. B, Mahmoud, is complaining of headache. Abdul Mujib is complaining of headache. Both of them are given pain relief, painkiller. Abdul Mujib comes back relieved, saying, whoa, my headache has disappeared. Mahmoud is still complaining. It means that it is not the Panadol, it's a means, but Allah is the one that makes it to act. So you depend on Allah when you take medication, not on the medication alone. Don't say, I've never done surgery where the victim, where the patient dies. No, it's not your precision or your perfection. No, pay attention to your precision and perfection, but depend on Allah while doing it. Because you can just make one mistake, and that's the end of you. You just kill someone. One costly mistake that you are not even aware of with all your professional competence. Can't you see? So we are rounding up. هذا سبب This is an example. You sow a seed, that is a means. ولكن لا تعمد على very high Don't depend on your sowing of the seed that you have done, that you have studied agriculture. You have degree in agriculture. You have this and that, you have perfected it. You know how to till to the soil. You know the exact amount of fertilizer to put. So your expertise is what you are depending on when you sow the seed now. Don't depend on that, أكرام الله. وفعلك Do not depend on very high وفعلك بل اتمد اتمد That's a command. اتمد على الله Depend on Allah. Depend on Allah. في نموه هذا الزرعي That's in the graph. The nourishment, the nurturing of this النموه ك هذا الزرعي وتفميره تفمير and seedlings for it to start producing fruit. and seedlings for it to start producing fruits you have to depend on Allah because you have seen in an orchard the same seed from the same source you planted you sold and then in the plantation you have a particular tree bearing fruits and the other one is not bearing fruits أليس كذلك this is just an example for وحميته and its protection واسلاحه and then what and then in his wellness you see some if you go to the farm land go you see some some vegetation they are affected by what by some insects and some you know I'm not into agriculture so I'm not into farming worms eat up certain uh 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 plants right and then they become sick right you see them dying you see them turn yellow even before dry season some are affected by the nature of some insects or the soil some chemical reactions in the soil ولهذا يقول that is what Allah say أفرأتم ما تحرسوا don't you see ما تحرسونا what you saw أبوبان دوكي شوكا أنتم تزرعونه أم نحن الزارعون is it you that caused them to grow are we the growers Allah is asking when you sow the seed you have done your part when you water there you have done your part when you put fertilizer you have done your part but Allah say أنتم تزرعونه أم نحن الزارعون are you the ones that are causing it to grow or are we the growers definitely Allah is the one that causes it to grow فالزارع الحقيقية the grower of these seeds of these plants in reality هو الله is Allah سبحانه وتعالى أما أنت as for you فقد فعلت سببا indeed you have done an act that is a means فقط قد ينتج هذا الزر وينبت this plant this seed will sprout out and then grow وينبت وقد لا ينتج and it is possible for it not to grow not to even sprout out وإذا نبت and when it finally grows and sprouts out قد يصلح وقد لا يصلح it can be good or it can be affected by insects and worms and other things قد يصاب بالأفاتين في يذهب it can be afflicted by certain defects and then it goes without you benefiting from it so in reality I put trust in Allah سبحانك اللهم بحمدك شهلكا وانثى فركا were to be it there is a question online now okay can you read it out or let me check I hope the class is understood so you now know how to trust in Allah not sleeping and then hoping for some miracles to happen
we have people who use some spiritual means
that is
like shirkah they go to shirkah and they hold on to this
that is haram that is shirk when you do when you when you do what Allah has not asked you to do that involves shirk and so you are protecting yourself that's holding on to means سبب and then you ask someone to go and do Istighara for you that one is bid'ah but for you to go and do some acts of shirk that you are protecting yourself you are putting on some talisman or you are you are robbing certain things that you say gunshot is not going to uh uh you know harm you or other thing that is what السلام عليكم is it accepted to follow one Madaab in observing all acts of Ibadah someone asks this question okay on the issue of following Madaab in one act of Ibadah unless you have a stronger opinion that dislodges the position that that Madaab has adopted in observing that particular act then it is safer for you to adopt what the Madaab of your people are upon to avoid confusion if you go to Saudi today practically moderately it is the Hanabila right if you go to Turkey it is what the Hanafi am I right if you come to West Africa here it's what the Maliki school of thought you just find some slight differences and each of them is basing this opinion on a Nasayda from Quraan which they have interpreted according to the understanding that came to them in that aspect or a Hadith that they have held on to which might not be authentic but as far as the leaders the scholars the early scholars of that Madaab the Hadith was authenticated by them but later knowledge might come up to make us appreciate that action authentic and then by their conclusion that the Hadith is authentic drive some thick rulings from the Hadith and then if at the end of the day the Hadith is it's it's not authentic you know the thick rulings that have been deducted from it will not stand that is why you find the differences unless you find that really this is completely based on a weak Hadith and there is no any Hadith to support that position then it's better in that situation you have to abandon what your Madaab is upon and then adopt what is authentic from the Sunnah of the Prophet ﷺ even if it is not what your Madaab is upon because the Hadith that your Madaab has built that action upon was authenticated by the early scholars of that Madaab but later on it is found not to be authentic أليس كذلك Ibn Taimiyah has a book رفع الملام عن الامات العلام رفع الملام lifting up blames from the uh the the great scholars of the Ummah because one of the reasons is that it is not possible for you to have one scholar that has memorized that understands that knows all the Hadith of the Prophet not even a companion that knows all the Hadith of the Prophet ﷺ and then Hadith could come to someone from this means and then it is authenticated because you accept from this person but that person does not accept from this person ليس مقبول أليس كذلك and then it could be that this particular Hadith that is contrary to what your Madaab is upon did not reach the early scholars of your Madaab that base their rulings on that so they might base it based on what the narrations that they have in front of them so it is good at least to avoid confusion in terms of معاملات and other acts uh 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 this is in my Madaab this is how we do this this is how we do that as long as for example you recite قلوا الله برب فلك برب الناس in Witter in some places they recite only قلوا الله not that the uh uh برب فلك and برب الناس is not but this is the Hadith on this is stronger than that is the Hadith that this Madaab has adopted you know it is if you live in the Shafi'i dominated place and then they believe that Bismillah Rahmanir Rahim is part of uh Alhamdulillah so when they recite Surat al-Fatiha in Salaah you see them uh reciting Bismillah aloud Bismillah Rahmanir Rahim Alhamdulillah because Bismillah Rahmanir Rahim is the first verse according to the understanding of the Shafi'i school of thought أليس كذلك and then if you happen to find yourself in that place like Ibn Taimiyah if I'm not mistaken he said you know even if you are asked to lead in that dominated area Shafi'i dominated area you don't believe that Bismillah is part of uh Fatiha and then they just recite it aloud you know it's لا يضرك يعني لا يضرك it does not harm you and then um for example sitting in Salaatul Subahi whether مفترش or متورق you you sit on your buttocks in the in the taya of Salaatul Subahi or you sit on your left foot because the Prophet ﷺ will sit on his left foot in the first uh 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 sitting and then in the second and last sitting the Prophet ﷺ will sit on his left side so but what about Salaatul Subi that has only one sitting now this is where you have difference of opinion now the Shafi'i are saying that no that sitting on the left side on the buttock is for the last sitting the Tashawud of Taslim hence the sitting of Salaatul Subi is for the Tashawud of Taslim hence you are going to sit on your buttocks not on your left leg and the other scholars are saying no in the first sitting this is how the Prophet ﷺ sit and in Salaatul Subi we only have one sitting so this is how we are going to sit
so what you hear I've always in confusion that sometimes I do this
then it doesn't harm right it doesn't harm it's all matter of you know because why because you don't have explicit command that said in the first sitting this is how you sit in the last sitting this is how you sit in Salaatul Subi this is how you sit right it is the action of the Prophet ﷺ then it's subject to the interpretation understanding now أليس كذلك another example and these are the things but at the end of the day because of the type of world we live in now if you as an individual for example there are things that generally if you are asked and this is the Madaab of the community you live in and you know what the Madaab is upon it's not against the Sunnah but you have a stronger opinion you lay out the stronger opinion say yes this is what the Madaab is upon sometimes you say this is stronger opinion you as an individual you are obliged because those that are holding on to this are not seeing it as long as what they are holding on at least is Hassan Hadith that let the deduction of that ruling and then you as an individual believe in this let's take an example with the issue of Salaatul Tarawih eleven rakaats or beyond that you teach people this is the Hadith of Aisha رضي الله this is the interpretation that scholars have given this is the Hadith of Ibn Umar this is what the scholars have inferred from it it's inference it's understanding right but this is what you strongly believe in and this is what you are going to hold on to because your Madaab in this situation is Madaabat Tarjihi now when you have two issues that apparently are not the same the first thing is Ajmau bring them together and see how you can reconcile the two and work with the two of them as against discarding one if is a Amkana if Ajmau is not possible then you do Aktarjihi that is you based on stronger evidences you now prefer one opinion above the other one and then you hold on to that أليس كذلك and then Ajmau أولا من الترجي the scholar said when you combine the two statements together and then you are able to reconcile them and act upon them is better than discarding one and then holding on to one am I clear so if you live for example I do eleven rakaats right if you ask me to lead in my in my environment you have learnt it you are you are more convinced with the opinion of those that say restricted to eleven rakaats and then you do eleven rakaat if you happen to go to a place where in the monks they are praying thirteen rakaats and and bo and they ask you to lead please by all means let them this is a matter of what difference of opinion but this is what you believe in you let them know but of it happened uh I I I want to recall exactly when Ufman bin Affan you know and Abdullah bin Masood with respect to the issue of combining prayers in Makkah they are in Hajj I've forgotten and then Ibn Masood this was what Ibn Masood was upon Ufman bin Affan did the opposite of what Ufman bin Ibn Masood was but he followed Ufman bin Affan just to avoid any fraction that will come amongst the Ummah I hope you understand but by all means when it comes to you teaching it teach people this bring out the knowledge it doesn't matter if your Madaab is upon this right but again uh 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 sometimes if what they are upon of the Madaab is not harmful you are only calling them to that which is better and then when you call them to that which is better it's liable to cause a lot of confusion because of lack of knowledge is better you leave people upon what they are doing that is already acceptable by the Sharia that is not but where what the Madaab is upon is clearly built upon a weak narration that the evidence for the estimate of the ruling and the extraction of deduction of ruling from it is based on a weak narration then by all means you have to discard what your Madaab is upon at that time then you hold on to what is authentic from the Sunnah of the Prophet ﷺ أليس كذلك now